Now I'm just like when you wanna lean back in and just know the reason. It's not that far from you, the arms.
You got a little chair there, wasn't it?
Oh, okay.
I can see you. Yeah, I don't judge you. I mean, I mean, I would put this one.
Well, you didn't have to do what I could've done, and thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
Could you get that?
Yes.
The lights on the panel, you're gonna do some bad. We'll pop over, come in.
Is Tara coming? Okay, she's cool. Well, she she met with Rob.
She's literally the whole manager.
The docs will do whatever they want. So. I assume. Hey, Rob. Tara's coming, right?
Yeah.
How's her moving? Now, she said she met with you today. Have you seen those Pahas kings? They're they're the trumped up.
Their bullets.
From the bottom. Yeah. Yeah. Right on time, or a minute late.
Yeah.
Monk, I can't wait to hear about your your travel. Maybe one of these days soon.
Yeah.
I'm I'm interested in your nature. Seriously?
Yeah. He refused to eat the food over there. I couldn't eat that. I lost six pounds. I I just couldn't eat. I couldn't. I looked at food like this. I just can't eat food. There's a worry. I mean, maybe you have a better.
Yeah. No, I love it over there. Guard dog. Yeah. Well, just, you know, what you need to do if you ever need a loose and weight. We'll just send you overseas.
He's doing really good. He's he's getting.
Get you a heck of a diet.
Very social. Yeah, and calm, you know, when around.
I'm happier here.
He's doing great.
Sorry you had to deal with that nonsense.
Yeah.
Happy you're better.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
So actually, it was a lot softer. It was a smaller.
Did Brenda do it?
It was. He was just like.
Okay.
Yeah, it was awesome. Well, he's five months on, so he's still a puppy. So maybe. Yeah. No. Just, I have four kids, and that says everything. I mean, immediate school is at my house.
Happy we got the feels.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nick. Nick. I'm recording. Whenever he hits that gap.
It's been going.
What's that?
It's been going.
Yeah. I turned it on. About like four and a half minutes. I never know when he's.
Okay, let's call the November session of the Pennegrass City Council to order. The first order of business will be a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business will be, uh, Nathan, would you lead the center prayer, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we pray for your wisdom and guidance over our meeting tonight. We pray that you continue to bless our town, our city, our state, and this nation with your favor and blessings. We pray you help us be best servants to our community we can be, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions concerning the minutes? Okay, can we have a motion then to accept the minutes as presented?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Okay, it is approved. All right, treasurer's report. Everyone had an opportunity to review the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Any questions concerning yet?
No.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with a like sign? Okay, all right. All right, library report.
For the month of November, we've had sixteen patrons and two computer users, and we've checked out twenty-seven books.
Very good. All right, any any, uh, questions from the, uh, council here concerning the, um, library report?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, environmental services report, Rob.
Uh, you see the big event behind us, and thank, we can say thank you to the guys from the street department and Renee and Sandy from our finance department. We are having our first, let's skip ahead a little bit quick. They've been working hard on this for the last couple of weeks. This is saying it's workshop. We're still working on it, about eighty percent through. But we're having our first Christmas Santa pictures. The first series of this Friday from six to nine, and the next Friday, six to nine. We used to kind of do it early in the year, people like take their pictures and use it for their, uh, for their Christmas card thing like that, so. Uh, the big part we're doing a real good job as far as, uh, helping out, uh, getting this thing done. And we're gonna say a special thanks again to Renee and for sending for putting this thing together, so. Uh, I know it was, get it out in the beginning of the meeting, but I hope everybody can get out here and have a good fellowship and come come see Santa with us next Friday.
Thank you, Rob. Any any question from the council? Will Rob on the, um? All right, let's go into new business.
Um, when we were working on the town center, uh, ordinance to put the the town center in. Uh, we started looking to see what other cities were doing as far as regulating, um, town areas. So went back and look, uh, on town center areas, went back and looked and found that the city of Pennegrass's alcohol ordinance was written in two thousand and four. And that ordinance has a lot to do with, you know, uh, well, it's seventeen years old. By the time it was about this, about about sixteen, seventeen years old. Since then, things have kind of dug up two two things together. Since then, uh, back then, you couldn't make beer personally to sell. You could just drink it yourself, but you couldn't make wine for sale. But Georgia's over the, uh, intervening years added taprooms and wine and breweries and things like that. Also, with COVID, the governor put ordinances in for home delivery of alcohol, even out of, uh, restaurants, to go kind of with, uh. There's very, there's strict laws on it to go with, uh, uh, entrees and things like that. So what we looked at is with what we're looking at trying to do to our downtown district, look, take a look at what cities like Dakota, what cities like Jefferson, Rans, and Houston, and even Talo, that don't have it, have this district in there. Uh, what they can do to, what's allowed in the district. So to dug tail into a town center district, we looked at the first thing that is this upgrading and bringing to a more modern, a more modern, um. Version would be alcohol ordinance because, you know, alcohol is so 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 old. So what this is about is the first reading of the alcohol ordinance, we'll post a proposed alcohol ordinance, we'll put it online. So I'm gonna I'm gonna go over to the city council kind of quickly what changed, what's gonna change in this thing. So when the government put in the home delivery, so from from liquor stores and or restaurants, that that retail outlets. It's kind of a, you could do that as long as you comply with the partner regulations, unless the city or county took affirmative action to stop. Well, I I think maybe some did, but most didn't, so technically, our our business, this is our liquor store and our convenience store, technically do a home delivery. There are strict rules on that, and those rules are you have to be twenty-one years old to deliver, twenty years of the sentence, gotta be prepaid. Uh, you have to feel like a little online certification class, so there's a lot of rules. There's a lot of rules that you have to comply. So what we did was, uh, this new ordinance, we we added that that issue to it and said that we're gonna allow that. We just we just mirrored Georgia's state law. We added a temporary permit for Georgia's, uh, that Georgia allows for civic organizations. So maybe we were somebody like a, um, uh, uh, some kind of veteran group or some kind of other other group that wants to have a special event. This allows them to not come in and ask for a specific, um, event permit that the city council has approved or denied being to have alcohol at that event. We also clarified, made it really clear, the rules for suspens or revocation of our ordinance that was written in two thousand and four, I believe, was put to the full out city of their their council. And the different attorneys was kind of vague on appeals. This puts the buck with the city of Pennegrass. If someone sells to underage persons, they have troubled their establishments, they don't they don't follow the code and ordinances, and they go to, it's like a second offense. They deceive, their person. They work the city council, the business owner, not the person, so we have a a person that sells alcohol to date to a undercover, uh, a person that's that's underage. They were simply belonging to state court or into city court for their for their offense. Well, well, you get multiple offenses, and we take the citizens, and we're gonna wanna make sure that the business owners, the alcohol license permit holders are held responsible. So this ordinance adds a clear, um, line that says you're going to go for the city council, and the city council can decide. It's it's got all the processes in there. You're gonna be due notified whether the license is suspended for, um, probation or even pulled. And also, it also sort of the pillip pilot process to the state courts of of Jackson County. So we cleaned that up, something that was that's kind of vague in the original, uh, ordinance. What it does also, it adds an entertainment district. What we call the entertainment district is it's a town center district. So we look to see what, again, what these other cities are doing when they follow quote unquote entertainment district. Entertainment districts here will be the the edge of where the down the town center started, and through all the construction, there's a rock from that. All the way to this this, uh, it it this, is it, what's the person, what's the name of that suburb? The Pennegrass Glen subdivision. It cuts through the fire department division to the city hall and the city park. It cuts by the the the, uh, boy scout building, cuts through the parking here, it cuts, of course, it goes around the church, it comes through this building, this park, then it goes back across the street. That's the original. It's attached to it. It'd be a picture on the website, but it'd be kind of orange or reded out. That's the original district. We talked to the council before. The city council can expand it, they can reduce it, they can get rid of it, they can they can change it, but this is something that. But, um, this is a defined area where we wanna we wanna put what kind of businesses to be able to limit what kind of business, they put the right type of businesses, uh, in there. So they're dug tails into the alcohol area. Inside the entertainment district, looking at what other cities are doing, it allows a carry of beverages during specific specific times. Those beverages, alcohol beverages, have to be purchased from the establishment inside entertainment district, you're not BYO BYO B. And it was fascinating studying this. Just so, just you know, it's a, you know, you can be back and look, you can only purchase one beverage that's gonna be in, uh, opaque container. You have to have a sticker on that that says it was purchased inside that district for you to be able to carry it during the specific time. So look at other cities. Other cities mandate that you purchase the city, the stickers from Penne from the city, so I said, that's a good idea. They have like twenty different color stickers. That is, so if it's always red, you can just keep on bringing a cup home and bring your bring your alcohol or whatever. So what they do is you call a police department that morning, the police department tells the local people in this district, here's what color sticker is that, man. So, and the police department knows what it is, but it's not it's not a a caddy marted door. This is this is something, again, we looked at what Dakota's doing. We looked at what Jefferson and Rans, those items are, we looked at the cities like Alpharetta, Woodstock, and, um, make sure that it's regulated. Uh, and we want to keep it to the zone, keep it to this area. If they step outside of the area, then then it's not gonna be a harsh place, but they're gonna be warned, but they're gonna make sure that. Like downtown Athens, this police, this police world is took get took care of. But those, anything that's that's allowed and getting one containment per person, it's gonna have to have that baby sticker on it. One thing that city of Pennegrass has never done is we have never had a hand of what they call a handle or a work permit for anybody that handles alcohol. So, starting January one, which we're nice, getting application, we have two places right now. We have our Barnum Auto Shop, we have a Sunaco that both sell alcoholic beverages. They will be required by city, from city Pennegrass ordinance to have each person that handles those beverages that sells it to come through the city of Pennegrass. And the police department will do a background check on them, that criminal, do a criminal history check, do a fingerprint check. They will take their photograph, and if they're cleared, then they'll give us some type of permit, we'll make sure that we have their picture on file. Only licensed individuals can sell alcohol. Man, this is kind of us being behind the times, it's been so quiet, but we thought we could out ahead of this, looking at what we, uh, what we anticipate coming in Pennegrass. So we're now gonna add a work permit and a handle permit for anyone that ha- that handles the alcohol beginning January one, twenty twenty-three. Another thing that's interesting, we require, uh, some minor training. We're not gonna make them go do classes and spend money, but we are, we already have some minor training inside this ordinance, we're gonna put the training topics on. And the last thing that was fascinating, what never occurred to me is we were put in, they have to have security cameras. So the two businesses we have right now have security cameras, but any businesses in the future will have to have that sell alcohol, including taprooms, breweries, wineries, have to have a camera system. And they have to make that camera system accessible to the police department if there is a crime committed on that premises. Or, you know, or or or, um, they have to make the, they might have to make it available. This happens, I don't know if it'd be good enough, but they have a they have an issue, they have something that's called a place, a place we didn't be able to take a look at. So we took a real hard look at the ordinance. It's not a whole lot of, it's not a massive amount of changes. What we did is we did upgrade. We wanna put like a little Ovalay district into that downtown district. So this is this is what we asked the city council to do was replace chapter twenty-one of our, um, that's the existing alcohol ordinance, in its entirety. And this will be the first reading of it. So this is ordinance number twenty-two, that's twelve, that's zero, ninety-nine. It says, an ordinance by the mayor of council of the city of Pennegrass, Georgia, to amend and replace the alcohol regulations for the city of Pennegrass. Non-designated as chapter twenty-one of our code of ordinances of the city of Pennegrass. To repeal conflict ordinances, provide for an effective date for other purposes. Uh, the governing authority of city of Pennegrass hereby deigns as follows, but it won't take long. The alcohol or section one ordinance of city of Pennegrass presently designated as chapter twenty-one shall be deleted in its entirety in place of this new alcohol ordinance as attached in the exhibit A. Again, we'll put this on the web page for everybody to touch and feel it, anybody in council, anybody to look at it. And this press reference made a part of this ordinance thereof. This ordinance is made and designated as chapter twenty-one of the ordinance of Pennegrass. The code of ordinances of Pennegrass submitted add this this new section twenty-one. Anything in conflict is repealed, and it can be fixed by the native adoption. So that's the first reading on that. We'll make sure, Renee, that we have it out for the get on the line tomorrow morning. We've done an awful lot of research on this thing, and I've had individual individual meetings with every single person sitting at this table up here. Paul has helped work on this on city term, so we thought that's a good ordinance, it's gonna be something that a police department can police, that we will have better control over who's in our city. Who's 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 handling retail alcohol, and, um, who's able to move around that specific district with that. So if you have permission, Mayor, I can go to the second one. Um, which is the quick update. We got, again, back to Santa, we got Santa, um, this Friday and the next Friday, both of them six to nine, we got a great Santa Claus coming. We'll have refreshments, um, we we hope to see everybody out here, get your kids, get your pets. We've had a lot of dogs. It's it's an awful lot of fun. It's an awful lot of fun. We hope that you guys get out here and, uh, enjoy some some, uh, some Christmas with us, so. We split it up into two weeks, because it's got, we've been doing this for just eighteen or nineteen years in a row, and we split it up into two weekends, because it just got so busy, but we hope that there's hope to see anybody out here with this. Uh, real quick, update on the town center progress, the town center across the street. Uh, I tried to text out the people that live local. They hit rock, and they had to do a little bit dynamite. Did they do something today, or day?
I heard it.
Yeah. So when they when they were doing the Geo. Well, we may have just get it, we may have been digging around, and no, they wouldn't even dig around, so I think it's about six or seven different times we've had the blast. Let's put the project behind a little bit, so there's three engineer waters, there was the Jackson County that was proved, you know, months and months and months ago. They're still doing the final actual, putting together engineering, because it's a all-ramp and flow system. So unfortunately, the rock kind of kicked it back a little bit, but they're looking forward to be able to start going vertical with some of those buildings. It probably, uh, as the city tops us quietly, that's why we're looking at this downtown entertainment district with folks that are interested in coming in, we get an awful lot of interest in that, so. We're really, really excited about that. That's kind of just kind of, uh, a quick update. This is, the next item of business is not appropriate warrants, but it's a discussion on land use management update. What we, and we got a flyer, Rob, make sure they, if I take a look at their, our mind, we have one place about our about our Santa. One thing that was interesting, I was talking to the city attorney and and that, uh, that we, that the city leaned on leaned on a lot, and 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 much bigger than our. And we talked about, uh, one twenty-nine, and I I'm sorry, this this game, oh, this, I'll call it, it's Gleney Road, it's, uh, used to be one twenty, Old Games Bahala. The Old Games Bahala, Ovalay District, it's sort of a wild, wild west of what you can do out here, because it said, we just want you to have businesses out there, without cities houses flipping pretty much. It didn't really define, that was put again, again, by Quad Cities in two thousand and four, and it wasn't really defined. So when we're talking about looking at this entertainment district, and lawyer, and one specific attorney warned me, so be careful about what you put out there, because if you want a walk-in. Entertainment district with restaurants, uh, you know, yogurt places, pizza places, things like, little little places you can get your golf carts in, a big park, another park, an amphitheater. And a family-oriented place, be careful what you put in there. There are cities that have put these districts in, but higher the pitch, they couldn't pick out, they had like one, one, one has like a methadone in it right in the middle of it. I'm not really sure you want a methadone put in the middle of your downtown center district. And so we start looking, we're saying, really, you know, um, do you want a funeral home, a pet cemetery? One city has a wrecker service, but it was there before, so it was kind of grand, probably. And so he said, it was very fascinating when you put these these town center districts in, you're really, you're really looking at what you want to exclude, also make sure it's the right mix of things, the things to come in here. So I've I've been able to talk to, uh, a lot of work with our city attorney, a lot of work with the mayor, and look at what other folks did. So in the last minute, about a week, I said, you know, I wonder what Jefferson and Talo have done, and surprised, Jefferson Talo had one. So I went back and looked, I'm not so quite certain that we don't have one, but I don't think it, I can't find the room on two thousand and four book. So we looked and said, what do you guys do about your town center district and pull it right off of their, right off the land into the building of the code? And essentially, put their, I'm asking the city council to take a look at this, study this for a month or so, and put the almost identical orders, I mean, almost identical orders to what Jefferson has for a town center district. And that town center district, the reason you wanna take a look at that, because we're talking about that being an entertainment district, it's pretty fascinating, because you wanna have an inclusive list and an exclusive list. And you also wanna have a list that the city council can decide on. So when I was talking to folks, I was like, well, obviously, you don't want a methadone clinic, you probably don't want a school in the middle of it, because, you know, you you want people to be able to have open carry and have things like that around it. Do you want a gas station in it? Well, no, you don't want, because we want to be able to walk, you really want to be able to drive to the gas station. So it hit me, because I looked at some of the stuff that Swaney did, that's what's somebody really, really been beneficial to to give us advice. And what about like a Dunkin' Donuts with like a drive-thru? Well, you really don't want cars, you really don't want drive-throughs in unless you have like a edge. So what we did was attach this, this is on the internet also, beyond our webpage also. It's permissible uses, so this is what Jefferson, Talo, and a ton of cities, we looked at a ton of ordinances that say are permissible, what label they can make. Then we have absolutely not permissible, we're not gonna have a pet cemetery, a crematorium, a daycare, a methadone clinic, um, funeral home, it's just really not fitting with our with our downtown districts. Uh, cell storage, um, gas stations, two drive-throughs, but we also have some things that are like, um. So those are, those are not permitted. We have things that you can ask the city council for, so if a, with this quote, unquote Dunkin' Donuts type person or or a coffee shop come in. The city, they have to come from the city council and ask for various, so it'd be, you want a drive-through, maybe it's on the edge, but not not, I would say not in the middle of it. So this is ninety ninety-nine point nine percent, and it's an adjacent place right now today. I figure you couldn't get any better than having someplace that you're next door neighbor and send to Quad Cities. So we took a look at it, I'm asking council to look at it, some things, some things to me are, you gotta kind of, you gotta kind of take a peek at, like the daycare center, where, never really thought about that. I don't think you really want a daycare center in the middle of where, you know, exterminate a pest control. I don't think you'd want something like that in the middle of it, too. So some of this stuff is interesting, so this is literally, again, uh, Quad Cities's, uh, uh. Ordinance, their town center district ordinance, it's kind of exhibit attached to it. So we looked at it, and I think that we need to be formally, before much more progress happens out there, we need to make sure that we don't have gas stations. Pet crematoriums, methadone clinics, and wrecker yards in the middle of our, in the middle of downtown. As it stands today, um, I have to say, I think I'm turning to agree with, they they can probably do it, because of Ovalay District says, have a business, this law is not a massive business. Because it's so vaguely written, so that that's open for discussion, and hopefully that we'll put it on the on the internet, on our webpage, and hopefully the city council will take a take a really good look at that. And, you know, we have some good discussion on that next time, I think, because of the progress of the construction there, guys, that as a city, I I would recommend we try to do that, uh, sooner than later. Um, while we pass out here, this is right from Quad Cities's, which is Talo, Pennegrass, Talo, in our case, uh, main use manager code. And you can see it's all, yeah, literally just buried, it was very well mentioned, I think Mr. Washington wrote that thing, he felt, very well done. And, um, it's very clear, very precise. It's what they want, and they got a real good, real good idea, and they fit what would fit with our community, uh, in my opinion. And again, I've talked to a person here about that, um, if you take a look at it, now that, when they exclude it or include it or conditional, it's got a pink line down. So why not support, this is just a straight photo, I mean, so, um, that's, well, that's kind of about that. Uh, Mary's, are you ever going to O business?
Yes.
It's time to get to this thing. So O business, the last city council, we had a first reading of a commercial part of Liffel. We talked about that, so the commercial part of Liffel is for multifamily residences, warehouses. So we figured if we wanna, we wanna put code enforcement and make sure that our citizens are able to live next to neighbors, has the grass cut, the the trash picked up, old junkyards, and not special, special subdivisions. We didn't have a warrant specifically looking at multifamily, you know, that new apartment out there, so we, you know, we we start thinking, we really need to take a look at this. There's not a whole lot out there, so we kind of morphed into it and made it now. Did talk to the park people and the warehouse folks. So so if those know you were hard, cities laid out, at the at the red light, the, um, that that we we give them a certificate of occupancy and a furniture slash whatever company is in there, and can use that warehouse there. We want to make sure those grounds are maintained just like your house, those plants are maintained, flowers are maintained, the the stormwater is maintained, the drainage is maintained, the, like, there's no junk cars, there's no dr- uh, uh, junk trailer. So we put this ordinance together, and the city council talked about it last time. It's pretty good, I think it's a pretty, it's a twenty-two page ordinance, and we're asking the city council to not to, uh, pass this ordinance. And literally allow code enforcement, i.e. the police department, to be able to look at these folks. And it would be nice, and it would warn them, and and tell you what, they've done a great job, Cabo's done a great job, people that property up there, and they got a pan of telling the guys out here in the corner, but a really great job, people in the property. But they're leasing it to other people, Cabo's died, Cabo's the user, but these guys are leasing, we're gonna make sure that the end user who's doing, they're responsible for this. And we're gonna, we're gonna hold them to the fire, make sure you drive by, you have a well-maintained piece of property, albeit a warehouse, it's gonna be well-maintained inside city of Pennegrass. So, well, this is the second reading, um, on this, uh, Mary, we're asking, asking you to discuss it. So, well, this is the second reading, um, on this, uh, Mary, when we ask you about, ask you to discuss it, will we do the second reading on it?
Yes. All right, any discussion now from the? From the council, yes.
We kind of, so we kind of went over to Ann O'Zee last time, I want to.
Thank you, Ben.
I think the biggest thing about this, honestly, is just ensuring that the standards are up kept, not tomorrow, but five years, ten years down the road. Apartments always tend to degrade over time, and we want to ensure that that's not a possibility at this point.
Well, this goes right down to asphalt, curbing, plants, when we see a gray pine stock, it's going to be fresh pine stock, no dirt, it's going to have grass to cover on it. And they, they can be, they will be, they'll be brought into court and fined, be property owners, and we made that, we made that clear. So, this is what the council said, one of the biggest concerns is about, you know, exactly what Captain, uh, Gavin said. What's it going to look like? What's this, this park complex? It's beautiful. I want everybody to drive by it tonight, beautiful. We worked hard. I feel like we build ourselves sometimes, to make sure that thing is landscaped and looks pretty, and it's going to stay that way. What's going to happen in five or ten years? So, that's the reason, topic to the council, to be able to share our citizens and our council that that will stay that way. And we'll put a concentrated effort to make it stay that way, and not, not ever back down from that. So, long as I'm here, and hopefully, as long as everybody's here, no one backs down from that. This is the ordinance city here, so that's slated, uh, law of this, this city council, and it's going to stay here and go with it. So, so, yeah, we look correct, there's no way we're going to, this, uh, deteriorate, no way. Apparently, I told yourselves out there, that's not going to happen, not long as, uh, not, I hope, as long as any of us here. So, Mary, to commission, can I read this order?
Yes.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-two, eleven dash zero two nine. This is an ordinance, the mayor of the council of City of Penney Grass, Georgia, to create an ordinance, we now designate as commercial and multifamily residence nuisance and quality of life ordinance. And we appear to be kind of conflicting ordinance and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor and the council of City of Penney Grass, Georgia, governing body of the City of Penney Grass, Georgia, desire to add to existing code ordinances. An ordinance regarding and regulating commercial and multifamily residence nuisances and quality of life issues. And whereas the mayor of the city council of Penney Grass, Georgia, is authorized by the official code of Georgia annotated thirty-six dash thirty-five dash three. To adopt ordinance related to its property affairs or local government. And whereas the mayor of the council of City of Penney Grass, Georgia, deems this an ordinance to be for the betterment and agenda where for other City of Penney Grass and its inhabitants. Now, therefore, being named by the mayor of the council of City of Penney Grass, Georgia, is hereby named by the authority the same as follows. Section one, the code of City of Penney Grass, Georgia, is hereby amended by adding this ordinance. We stop out there, we don't have this ordinance, just adding to our code which are new ordinance. Section two, any nuisance existing within the corporate settlements of this city, except, except for any nuisance here on the, uh, except, sound being the man who set forth in this, in this chapter. So, section three is under authority of the official code of Georgia forty-one two nine, the mayor council specifically adopt, incorporate by references, revisions, uh. I'm going to name all these chapters, forty-one, that two, that's seven, that's eight, that's nine, ten, eleven, twelve. These are allowing cities to regulate the, the aesthetics of, of a community. These provisions are adopted as official orders of City of Penney Grass, as, as if set forth where herein in its entire, all ordinance and parts of ordinance and conflict, hereby appealed. Section five, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the mayor of the council of Penney Grass. So, proven adopted this twenty-third, third of November twenty twenty-three, City of Penney Grass, Georgia. So, I ask for a motion to adopt, uh, this commercial nuisance ordinance.
All right.
So, moved.
We have, we have a motion. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All right, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? All right, it is, it is approved.
If y'all run that up now while I go, we'll make sure we got a signature on that map so I can get that out to our business office tomorrow. Will you permission, I go to the next, the last negotiation?
Yes.
The city and the county are working on a local office sales tax, uh, negotiations, getting a lot of, uh. Uh, a lot of challenges, I guess, between the, the cities and the county, and want to thank the, uh, other mayors that are working hard with Mayor Tolliver. To come to the conclusion of how we want to, uh, how they want to get a, a loss, uh, district. The county at its last county meeting, that in the loss, the local office sales tax is the one, one penny sales tax. That's money that goes into general funds of the city to be used for general purposes. It was put in the, I, I think the early eighties, it was a statewide ballot, everybody in state agreed, uh, we're going to do it so it's not renewed. There's no vote out of this, it's something that's there. I believe most of that, I believe that actually some counties don't have it. But it helps, uh, it helps the county sales tax offset the, the accounting of cities for them. You know, it means just like, our Jackson County stopped two million dollars a year, that, that pays for a lot of shared dividends and court, courtrooms and salaries and everything. So, it's, it's something that's, it's something that's needed. But we're negotiating with them now inside of that, um. That has to be signed and completed by December thirty-first. So, what we, what we talked about and what some of the mayors mean is, we would like to have a resolution by the, by the city council to allow the mayor to sign. So, what that means is, an agreement comes out between the county and the cities, instead of having to get the city council together, what, what they're asking, the city council is to pre-approved, that allow the mayor to sign. What the, what the county is, is set forward, I've got it attached here, the county approved their offer to the cities. Um, we think it's probably, I'll be set, it's probably, here's what it is, uh, so Penney Grass knows what the percentage of the cities are, um, of, of city share is. Uh, we want to be allowed, not only our mayor, but all the other mayors be able to sign this, uh, as quick as it comes to doing, because if you don't sign it, you lose it, it goes away. Now, your citizens got to vote on it, and you lose it for at least a year. It's never been lost before, as far, as far as we know. The attorneys in the group were looking, nobody's ever thanked, anybody's ever watched, this has been there since the eighties. So, we could be the first to wait until the county on the last move to put that together. But what, what we would like to do is, um, mayors to make a resolution, allowing you to, if you own your destiny, if this thing comes on the last second, will you be able to sign it back to the city? And all other cities are doing it at once. So, Mary, will you make a motion to be able to, uh, allow you or your destiny to sign it off to the mayor?
Yes, all right. All right, you want?
Motion.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from, from the council? All right, all in.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't think we can, if the, in the event that, um. So, we do amend it so that if the council is available, the council can do it, and if not, the mayor can do it, or no, you can't have both in the same way?
I can't, I can't.
Sorry, I said, is there a way to amend it in such a way that it's like, if the council is readily available to me, then can, or there's not a way to do that?
You could, but it'd be dangerous. We've done this before. If you, if you don't get it done, we out, we get no money. Yeah, we could. Now, now, just because you have a resolution, the, the, the ordinance says that you, it's the model, resolution is pretty much a suggestion, you don't have to follow it. You can actually. American action, this is America government, American action, say, look, we can get us all together, we'll put everybody's city driver.
Right, my question is for the future, eventually, if we're not the American government, eventually, if we're not, and.
Yeah, if, 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 if there's time, I mean, you could, you could ask, I always ask the mayor, look, I, I feel more comfortable getting all this, put our city drivers, like.
But it's not required. Mike, it's not required, though, he says indeed, he can best make his decision, he, it's not required for the council, I mean, she could ask for it, but she, you don't have to do it, right?
Sure.
Okay.
So, anyway, must be a lawyer in the group. It is. So, anyway, uh. The, the, I, this is something that's been done, this is my third loss negotiation, this is something that's been done for years. What they, what they worry about is when you push up to that last minute, uh-oh, how are we going to get our city council together in Christmas? So, that's what, that's what the issue is. They just, they, I think they just kind of worry about that. Make sure that, because if you don't have anything signed, you, 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 we would actually set precedent, because as far as we know, it's never been lost yet. Loss has never been lost.
Yeah.
Now, if you don't want to be the first ones, because we don't have a city, we couldn't get the city council.
And my concern is not that, my concern is if, if our formal government changes in the future, will that change the?
The, they, you have, you have, you have to just get to it. Luckily, this is ten years before we have to deal with this again. This is done every ten years.
That's true, that's true.
So, so.
Okay.
I, I think a bunch of us will be retired by then, I sure, sure hope so. All right, Mary, I'm sorry, I concluded, I'm trying to get to that down, so I can conclude my, my present basis for old business.
Okay.
We had a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
All right, we got, we got a second on that?
I believe we did have a second.
Yes.
Okay, all right, any further discussion concerning this? All right. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? All right, it is approved.
Mary, could I ask, quick question on that, if I feel bad?
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure, we're looking at, you could have your signature and your destiny. Would that be where everybody on the council would be listed their name, and you could pick all the council to where committed somebody immediately? Or is it just one person that would be the next?
Is anybody who wants?
Anybody.
Anybody on the council?
Yes.
That would happen with the council, though, it says it doesn't need, it could be anybody.
That's right.
It's basically advocating every kind of power that the council has to the mayor, it just doesn't need, they don't even have to do anything.
And what makes it unique is that this is a mayor's government?
Sure.
It makes a little bit different.
Well, the city council still, but everybody else.
I have a question.
Well, y'all might have to go into, can we, can we go into the, uh, the, uh, other comment, Mary? Yeah, speed a little bit, we need to.
All right, we're going in the subject comment. Now, now, other comment is, you make the comment, I think we don't necessarily have to, uh, address that. It's just, you, you're just making a comment. Okay.
I, um, I was, um, I was interested in the amount of money that, um, that the city would be getting. Has, had the, the disagreements or, or the recipients of that money, has it been looked at in the last several years to see if that money is going to the best use?
Well, I, I'd like to tell you, so the loss is based on the teen sales tax, so the popular revenue actually is sensitive to county distributed. It is pushed into the general funds. So, what you have to do is, if you ask it from the city, the county side, obviously, the county trusts the state. But the, to give them the money and the, and the, the city's trust account to distribute their money, then again, it's pushing the general fund. So, it's pushed in because that has specific use. City use that from buying brooms, the, the fire trucks, the silvers. So, it's kicking, and each year, you audit it. So, every bit of that, the, the, the tax commissioner, I'm sorry, the finance clerk. Sends you, this is what he sends you, and you have to send that to your auditor. So, all that money's pushed in, and it's, and it's, and it's all of it. It's part of all the money, all the income sources you have versus the revenue. So, he's, yeah, he better believe it, each year, every, everything better be counted for a week.
Mm-hmm.
You know, somebody, somebody's got a problem.
Yeah, it sounds like it's combed over through, goes through several different.
Yes.
So, they'll get it.
Yep. And I, I don't know if the cities ever asked from the county, from the county, or county, or asked from the state, I would imagine if I had to take a guess, they have. But, you know, you could take guesses, and this was a weird, it's a guess what you're going to get, because what if everybody, the economy crashes? Everybody stops spending, you're getting money. The economy goes fantastic, you get more money than you're going to get. So, and if you talk about a wild guess, when you do budgets based on, I'm sure with a lot of folks did their budgets this, this summer. We, we weren't really looking at the economy starting to falter, but I think that, that it's probably going to be some adjustments to budgets. Because we already see a decrease of loss three months in a row. This money that we've been getting, we've seen a decrease this time last year. So, you'd have to adjust it, there's no, there's no specific amount that you get, you just have to trust that you give it the amount they say you should get. But I've never heard of an issue with something like that.
Is it like a sliding scale? Just say, you get this, this town center thing in, and all of a sudden, you, the city is making a lot more money. Does that mean that Penney Grass gets more money than?
The cities are making more money. This is what's weird.
I don't think she got to finish, will you guys?
Excuse me, sir, I, I don't need you to tell me.
I don't care if you.
I don't, I don't care what she does, you're not, you're not a model.
You would have looked at her.
Hey, 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 hey.
Sir.
Let's calm down.
We don't, I, I'm sure that you're probably, this is really weird, so we're not going to listen to that.
All I ask is for you to literally finish where she was.
You can ask what you want to ask, man.
That's what I did.
Did you want to, did you want to continue?
I was just going to say, if we made more revenue over Jefferson or Tamao, do we get a higher share of that money?
No.
And it determines that.
So, we take that penny sales tax, and it's split, it's percentages, if you spend, if you spend, if you spend, if you get a penny from Proger. We get the same percentage as Jefferson does. If you get a penny from Tamao Grill, we get the same percentage as Tamao does. So, it doesn't split by where it comes from, it splits by the, the entire county.
So, we might only get five hundred percent of a penny?
Yeah, but we're so small, we get like, uh, the last time, we were like point oh seven percent of one, one cent. So, we were the smaller people, we get one of the smaller shares, you know, it is kind of is what it is. But we, we heavily rely on local office sales tax.
Rob, it's, it's also based on population, is that correct?
Correct. The census, the census determines, could determine, there's not, they're not allowed to say it. But generally, the census determines how, how those monies are spent. I'm sorry, how those monies are distributed between people.
Along those lines, when we were talking about the, uh, keeping the properties up, the, the fine for not doing that. I have a strong, I, I saw some kind of a number where we had a six hundred population, I don't know how many years ago it was, you know, four, five, six years ago, whatever that was. I bet we've tripled that in the last year, but in all of these communities that are going up, my concern is fast growth. Is that fine a slap on the wrist and a joke? Or is it a serious enough thing that people are going to take it real seriously when they start messing up in our town?
Well, Georgia law only allows a city to fine to a certain amount, which is one thousand dollars, because they, they cap what we can do. So, what happens is, if those persons come into a, the municipal court, I would, I would hope that, that whatever the city judge was would say, look. You've been here two, three, four times, and they start getting thousand dollar fines, hopefully, they would, they would pay attention to it.
Is it enforceable some other way then, for the local authorities?
I'm not sure that we can get any kind of injunction relief, I think it's, I think it'd be fines, but you know, they have to come back and get a business license each year also. So, you know, the city council can, yeah, you can always take a look at, you pop into the council, the city, the city council can do something about a business that refuses to comply.
So, someone wants to get out over our schemes with the rules?
You're correct. You will, plus, we're trying to not do that, but we're trying as hard as we can to maintain.
Rob, let me ask you that, if, if, if you're projecting Penney Grass, you correctly, we're on about two point two million.
Correct, yes, sir.
We're looking at. So, if you're looking at that money coming in, are we looking at basically where you're going to have a list of things that are going in this general fund? As we commented, it'll have a main day.
It's, it's part of our operation budget, we're so small. For instance, you know, right now, if you're going to work at Braden, it's twenty-five dollars an hour per cop, fifty-two thousand dollars a year, and you're going to add about ten thousand dollars with the benefits on it. That, that, that's paid for out of loss. So, the, 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 the issues facing small cities over the next few years are flat out personnel. So, that general fund, instead of increasing the property tax to maintain your city, that fund allows you to go into and run the general operations of the city. So, it's not citizen, believe me, when, when, when we alter our budgets, there, that, that is, we, we calculate, we take a wild guess of what we think based on history, we're going to get. And we put that into our projected budget, and we hope that we get it. Most years we do, but there have been years when we didn't. And that, that is statewide, it, so we just kind of go with the flow with the mechanic with it, with the, but that is not set aside money, that is general operational money. And again, with what's going on in the future with employees and costs, wow, so that's going to be our challenge.
You talked about the budget and the three straight months of decline and the way the economy seems to be going. When is the budget made, approved?
It's always made in, uh, the county wants to see it done by July or August, so it's always made in, you know, we have our hearings in May, June, something like that.
Your hearings are in May, June for the calendar year that we're in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. No, 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 they're May, June, they start January first.
Okay.
It's very aggravating, because we have to have our budget done sometimes five, four or five months ahead of that, what the county wants us to do.
That's insane.
Well, we, we, we have no say so when they tell us what to do, because the school system runs out. What I understand, a June, July calendar, and they want us all going together, so the county says, you're going to do it. So, as a small city, we, we, we have, we, we've done this, I've been there eighteen years, of eighteen years, we've done it, and. And, and we, we missed some years, we have to amend some years, we've done better, somebody's doing, did you have a little corrected, it's like, wow, you know, what guess? Uh, what's gonna happen, and when we were looking back at the beginning of the summer, I didn't see, I didn't see a potential downfall, so we're doing this about.
Well, it goes through crystal balls broken, but I'm in commercial construction, and we saw this coming about, uh, what were we, in December? We saw it coming about twelve, fourteen months ago.
Well, I'll tell you what.
And it's still too late for you guys.
Do you? Well, I'll tell you what, when that's slowed down, our, our commercial's not slowed down at all. We're, we're looking at two more on the, on the bypass, so thanks for the warehouse, and we think the houses are gonna struggle.
Construction is off the chains.
Yeah.
The amount of stuff and the, the supply chain and everything, the pipeline is off the chains, it hit that.
Well, what's helped us is, like, like, we have, we have, for most of us representatives, Don who in the back, he's our district representative that covers our, covers our, most of our county now, and our area, we're thankful to see you tonight. What's interesting is the end of the port, so when they put the end of the port in, this is a transportation corridor for warehousing. So what Pendergrass did years ago is we don't, we, we, we didn't really encourage manufacturing. We want cross dock facilities, and it's worked out super well. As soon as they finished the end of the port, here it went, so you're talking about being positioned to be able to, again, help us, help us offset some costs by having these warehouses turn their lights on, and, and, and get freelance expenses and pay property taxes and bill. And the second thing you gotta look at that is, guys, we have, we have projected about eight million square feet of warehouse out there in the next, within the next sixty months.
How many?
Eight million.
Eight million, okay.
That, that, those are, that is a lot of property, it's a lot of dollars, like, like the, uh, the building that the voters is worth about eighty-five million dollars on the tax though. They pay no, there's no kids that go to school there, y'all. They pay full property taxes, Pendergrass gives no breaks, zero zilch. So those people out there pay all those, all those property taxes to the county, to the school system, and it, so we think we're being pretty good steward. Keep involved with all that bypass up next to the, the spray fields and plants and chicken and stuff like that. But we, we, we're, we're happy with what's come out of there, and we think we're gonna be able to survive a downturn. We feel like we're positioned to survive a downturn.
Um, over here in the town center, is that all gonna be business and entertainment, or is there any kind of residential connected to that?
The backside of its apartments.
The backside?
Well, over the hill, the backside of its apartments. The front side of it's got townhomes, and it's got, if you take the, I'm a new guy, I've been in the Swan, the PDC.
Yes.
They did the engineering, they're involved in doing this project here. So we have like a football shaped field, and around that will be the commercial, and then going north toward the liquor store area will be commercial. And it has some parking up against that hill, they're doing a diamond, that's a diamond park.
We know.
Yeah, and then we have the, uh, in the middle of the, uh, in the middle, they're gonna put a amphitheater, nice park, you know, they'll furnish and all that.
If you're interested in the designs, I can also show you after council's over. I can pull it up.
Yeah, all that stuff, then, then, then go all the way, and also, we have all the signs and all.
I've done the research.
All the pictures.
I'm new here, I just see what's on the wall.
Yes, and it's gonna be neat for pretty several.
I mean, a farmland's green here.
Do what?
I mean, a farmland's green on the layer.
Around three, I wanna say three hundred, around three hundred there.
Townhomes?
Um, around one thirty. They have more, they backed up, they're backing off those townhomes, but put a little more commercial up there, I believe. They're getting more interested in that than they, than they anticipate, we're excited about that commercial side.
I was asking, I've been told to, to, the folks at all, they change, it's gonna be all of ours.
Yeah, so, A, that's a big lie, and B, thanks for coming, big lie. Ma'am?
I didn't tell a big lie.
Well, that's a big lie, it's kinda a lie, it's a massive lie. How, how big is it?
He was asking you about.
So it was, that's a lie.
Well, I, I did that question.
Okay, good question, it's a lie. It's not gonna change, if you sit up here, we're not, it's not gonna change, and it's allowed to change, it won't change.
Look, let me ask another one too, listen guys, just to know, I officially start January first, but I've been blessed to meet a lot of great people here. We've talked, Mayor, Rob, we've talked about different things, the vision, uh, I've had a lot of people come to me with questions. I'm gonna make sure you have my part of the topic, and I like the conversation, that's the biggest thing here, is if you ask questions, and you should always get an answer, and it doesn't always come down to what you wanna hear, but it doesn't always come down to what the board was hearing. You're the constituents who elect these people, always remember that. But when I say that, I also give a pat on the back when they do things that's right, or to the vision that they create. Because Pendergrass is beautiful there, the problem is, you hit it, we have warehouses that are coming in, they're gonna be here ready at the right time. A lot of complaints I do here is, we don't want all these beautiful little farms to become warehouses. So you've got a perimeter here that looks good if we keep it within there. I'm just saying, I'm the new guy here, but I've got tons of emails and tons of pokeouts, so with that I will afford to work with a lot of you guys. And I mean that, uh, my number is always out, I know you can reach out to me, but I'm gonna sit there and I'm gonna always, you're weighed and balanced. I've always said that, I'm here to serve, and that's number one thing I want you to remember. Those are some of the things that people seem to be very concerned about, and that's the taking over beautiful land and just putting a warehouse there. So we need to kinda remember, we make a lot of mistakes when we do not have properties to give us structure. That means we do that in all areas quite a bit, to where we'll build something and we have a big trailer over there. Sometimes we get hit on, but you have a four lane out here that's already here, that is pretty good, when you look at one between that and including places.
Well, we mandate diesel lines, uh, this is done, we mandate massive diesel. We're working with D O P, we got two redbacks coming out there, we mandate, this, this, the landscape of the waters is not, we've been over backwards to make that city and to be a beautiful part of our city.
Okay, let's recognize the lady back here.
Um, I'm, I'm kinda good with this, but my name is Lisa, I'm the director of Jackson County C L C P. It, I don't know if y'all know, but we do have adult and family literacy in Jackson County. Uh, my, my board members wanted me to come tonight, some of them will be with the other councils and those working sessions, but, um, Pendergrass was, um, original partner in nineteen ninety-five, when the state of Georgia started certified literary community programs. But for some reason, I don't know, less than a decade ago, um, we kinda dropped off your radar. So I wanted to come tonight, and I don't know if I'm allowed to do handouts, but I brought some, just in case, fancy flyers. Wanted to remind the council and the mayor that this growth, this discussion about, you know, finances and sales tax and everything, it all depends on a workforce, and we can't get that workforce going, high wage, high demand jobs in Pendergrass if we don't have the trained people to work. So that's what we do, we partner with T C S G, the Technical College System, Lanier Technical College, and adult, sorry, family literacy, which is also through T C S G. So please know, we are here, we would love to fill that library you mentioned with sixteen patrons. So, um, we want classes, we want, uh, post class here, post a class at the library. We really need for you guys, um, to please just put us back on the radar as this county is growing so big. Remember, we have, Jackson County has about sixteen percent-ish dropout rate every year, so we serve students ages sixteen and up. But we do not take them if they're not ready for a G E D diploma, which is now called high school equivalency, because it's been advanced to such a level that it's, most college students' first year have trouble passing the high school equivalency exam now. So that's how difficult that exam has become.
And that training, you say you would want to do it in here?
We wanted, we want Pendergrass to be partners again. I don't know if some of you know my former mentor, Sandra Fight, she did this job for twenty-four years before I came along. And yes, we are looking for partners' locations, we are looking for you guys financially, we have a contractor services that other municipalities are a part of. But we will take any kind of participation, including the library, because as you mentioned, the warehouses, we can't let these students who are right now making below the living wage, we can't let that keep continuing as our county's growing. So please just.
Are these services only available to, um, those who end up going for high school equivalency? Are these services available for people that have also graduated?
Um, it depends, um, we do serve all the students that are trying to pass an employment placement exam, uh, college replacement exam. We serve them for free as well, because that's somebody who's under their, I guess, level that is expected of them, we call it, we just look at my level. So, that's a good question, thank you. We also just started, restarted Esol in Jackson County, English as a Second Language. So that's, hasn't been around again since two thousand eight, when we all crashed. So now that we've got the funding for it, high rate, most of the grants, we do have a big partnership with the commissioner's office, but up until a few years ago, every single municipality, including this one, every year, um, helped us with providing adult education and family literacy.
If you don't mind staying after, uh, and we can discuss some of this.
Okay, great, thank you.
I know we have two other people.
Uh, just one quick thing, uh, last meeting, discussion of time change, is that gonna be further discussion anymore? Uh, town council meetings, or is that gonna be further on? No?
At least not that we're thinking about it anymore. Glad that you got these people to come though.
I'm here for it.
Good accomplishment.
Uh, I live in Walnut Grove, and the, um, city has mandated that the builder repair the roads and the curbs. And I was told, so they, they, the inspector came and looked at the, the curbs, and we were told by the builder that our curb, which has cracks in it, didn't meet the inspector's, um, issue, so I didn't know who, who to talk to about talking to the inspector on the, uh, the curb work.
Just, just leave your number, that's your name in, in the red, with the city clerk.
Okay.
Just leave your phone number for them, and they, you know, I'm the city administrator, so they'll get to me, I'll get to the building inspector, and they'll, 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 they'll. We need an actual drive-by.
Right.
And we make them, yeah, they, they might say it, but they won't fix it.
Yeah, no, yeah, 'cause I talked to the contractor, and I, you know, I'm, it's like hitting the, or the administrator, or the, the project manager, and he said he was gonna come and look at it, but he hasn't yet. Also, there's no stop sign in the cross street between Starbucks and Walnut Grove. We have complained incessantly to, to.
That is still.
So, my, my, my question is, what recourse do we have? 'Cause they keep telling us there's no stop signs to be found in, in the United States to put in, which I, I find hard to believe. Uh, we have our.
We'll get it after. That is still, because that, those streets haven't been turned over yet.
Right.
It's private property.
Yeah, that's what I, so I'm trying.
Where you missing that?
Starbucks on Walnut Grove way.
Did it, did it pull?
Yes, the other, other side, the pool side has a stop sign. Uh, but they, they put like a, you know, one of those road signs with the slow and the stop on it, but you keep getting stolen and.
We'll get our guys up there.
Uh, we, we have, we have our annual association meeting tomorrow, so I will be bringing that up again.
Yeah, that, that's their responsibility.
I, I, I don't think it's much.
We'll get our guys up there.
Alright.
I have something along that same line, I was hoping to request for a green arrow at, uh, one twenty-nine and Wayne poultry. Right now, when you're on one twenty-nine, and the, the lights on one twenty-nine turn green, you get an immediate, uh, yellow arrow, and you, you know, you have to wait till it's set.
You never get a green arrow.
You never get a green arrow, as we see, um, it's, sometimes it's.
Oh, you got it, I'll just call City Hall, and we'll go right to, our place department, they call them rinkies and D O Ts. I, I didn't realize it was cycling, it's supposed to.
It cycles with everything else, but it never goes green, as soon as the lights go green, it stays yellow, and then it goes red.
I can just imagine D O T doesn't realize that, or there's some reason they set it that way, but we'll find that out.
And D dot, D dot does handle that, I'm doing quite a bit of that with time on an arrow. We do a study, they come in camp, how many cars go within an hour, certain times of the day, and what they'll do is they'll look at a yellow, this for a caution, if it's not as many number cars, green is if there's so many within that hour. And, uh, I've had to prove, do quite a few who are extending a second to a lead, you get two more cars, sometimes twenty-four of them on a two day.
About seven and eleven.
Yes.
In certain, at certain times of the day, it's easy, easy peasy, you know, to go through there, but then, you know, at night, um, there's a, it's a, it's a blind hill looking, you can't even see all the cars coming up.
Look at it, look at that tonight, let me know something more, please.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, it never goes.
It does cycle, I have, I go through them a million times, I never pay attention to it. I'm just wild, okay.
I do have one more thing, I'll have to clarify. Uh, regarding, um, you, you touched on commercial nuisance, but is there such a thing as private nuisance, uh, residential?
Yes, ma'am, that's something that, that city council has been working on next. So we, we have a basic ordinance that was put in in two thousand two, modified in two thousand and four, and we're trying to upgrade. So, within the next few months, I think that's something the city council has discussed, they think that, so the city attorney will take a look at. Looking at what, we wanna make sure that we fit in with what everybody around, what our neighbors do, what our neighbor cities do, what the counties do, so we're not out there in that field, but we are working hard on that right now, and working on, like, our, add like the whole enforcement provision into the place department. This is the first phase, we kinda wanna see how this works, um, and then we, we, we gently remind people what they need to do, this gives us some teeth, but absolutely, that's something the city council must see put in, so with the next couple of months, you'll see that we've been working on hard.
Well, there are three things specifically, we've lived here three years now, and we live in Cedar.
Grove.
Cedar Grove. We think there might be squatters in the woods, um, there are pit bulls that are allowed to hunt free, and, um, private fireworks, you know, till one in the morning, you know, our, our dog passed away from a heart attack during.
Well, fireworks call a place department, because we have the New Illinois ordinance. On the pit bull, we have, we have, call the place department again, we have animal control, countywide animal control coming out, I'm sorry, what was the other?
Um, the squatters, um.
The squatters, you know, I used to, I usually made that was amusing until I found out it was actually hobo, it was to get off a train, and actually live behind a quick trip. So, if, again, simply call, we have a non emergency number, you can simply call, if you don't feel like calling number one, you can simply call the clerk and leave a message, and we will get officers out there and look around the area. But I actually, it might have been us, was it us, that went out and found it on the campus?
Over there off.
Yeah, we actually found somebody, and they, they were hobo off a train, I thought, oh, you're kidding me, but we, we actually found one over there.
We personally experienced all these things.
Call, call us, we got a great place department, we'll get out there and get up. And they will report back to you.
My question kinda goes along with the commercial nuisance. Um, I live right here on Park Street, and the trash from the construction site is horrendous. It blows across the street, and it's on the embankment, between the embankment and the railroad tracks. The other day, it was on the tracks. I look out my windows, I'm working every day, and I see that trash, who's responsible for that?
Well, they are, they have construction, but we, but we, we, six days a week, we're out there picking up trash.
It, it's.
We'll, we'll, I'll, I'll give the street.
Get on the other side of the road on the, where the trash.
You mean the other side?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, I'll give it to them either side of that.
Yeah.
Let me tell you what we have over there, we've got people dumping, we've found them, we caught them dumping trash on that side.
I don't doubt it.
No, no, we caught, I, I was there, we caught literally dumping boughs over there. So, so that's not how we construct this, we literally had people just amazing the dirt.
Now, are that, are y'all gonna put trees back up, that y'all went through and clear cut everything that, um, by the railroad tracks?
They're gonna go back and landscape it, they're gonna go, they're gonna go back and landscape it.
Are they gonna put trees?
I'm not sure, but that's something to be involved in, again, you, we can call the city clerk, I'll be glad to come out there.
Not by the railroad tracks?
Yeah, the rural company ain't gonna let us, 'cause the rural company wants them stripped, but doesn't mean we can't push, put, uh, shrubbery, it's like smaller plants, like ground cover, a nice ground cover. A rural company would prefer to have completely stripped, like up here, around these crosses, maybe it's pull every tree that was here, they, they gotta go. So, for their safety, for their, they, they don't care about beautification, like, we like to have a wood house, or they don't necessarily agree with us.
Now, is there something in the construction contract that the people that are facing all this construction, do they have some kind of clause where they come and pressure wash your house?
If you have that kind of issue, it's funny you say that, because we've already asked them to do that to one house, so, and he and call the clerk, I'll be glad to come out and talk to you.
Cause I can't, I can't go to my, sit on my front porch.
We stopped watching the police cars.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I'm not spending money to do it.
I just gave up, I literally gave up, it was just so frustrating, but they are going to, they're on a campus, they're. I just gave up, I literally gave up, it's just so frustrating, but they are going to, down the campus, they're going to pressure wash houses, they got your house, of anyone's house around there, they're gonna come pressure washing, and we, we've already, it's, it's funny you say that, we've already seen people pressure washing, they said, we'll, we'll come, we're gonna come, they're, they're good, they're, they're gonna take us.
I made the mistake of moving my swing off my front porch, and you could see.
Doing that dirty old stuff, yeah, we, we, we just, we gave up the backside of the building, and we gave, I, I was thicker for making the.
I figure once they.
House than I gave up.
I figure once they quit.
They did.
Doing the earth movement.
Boilerplate and commercial construction contractors, also a clause in there that says they are responsible for keeping their work area clean.
Well, we have a city ordinance, we put an actual city ordinance on the construction site clean, and we monitor it, and because, that, they did the best job of any construction in the city, yeah. They, they're, they literally, not saying we have some bad ones, we've had some challenging ones, some of the suburbs, they're, they're, they're twice as clean as some of the suburbs. We've had some challenges with, Brooks Village, backside of Brooks Village was, wow.
I, I knew that, you know, before they, you know, when they got started, there was like big, big bags and, and stuff that had blown all down the street, and, and I knew it wasn't the city's job to pick it up.
They get out there and do a good job, which we, we got no problem with, so again, simply, if anybody ever has to play, simply call the city clerk, and she can get the, the emergency call, I'm old, and she would get hold of me, and was like, get hold of the correct apartment, and they'll get out there and they'll, they'll hang them, period.
It's good to know who to call, cause you, you don't know who to talk to and, and all that, so you bring it here to these meetings.
And I put that, if we wouldn't leave your names in the name, so we can know, when they come out and do the pressure washing, and when they're finished, they'll make sure they hang your house, we've already had some new, they said, yes, they would.
Good, good, thank you.
A lot of folks.
When it comes to contact too, you know, when all else fails, call Renee at City Hall, and a lot of you, I, I recognize, and a lot of you reach out to me personally too, and I'm, I'm more than happy to help also, so whatever we need to do to facilitate any of these needs, you know, we're gonna facilitate them.
Well, it's like you say, you know, we're new at this, you know, just been here a couple years, or three years, or whatever, you don't know who to turn, where to turn, and, and these meetings are very informative, and I appreciate, you know, the, the availability, uh, of, of y'all, of, of us asking questions and y'all answering, and, and all that.
Okay, any, anyone else want to address?